Both of our finalists candidates, each had an opportunity to present. Each had, one had more time than the other with the same questions in advance, but they both answered our questions. And then we each had two commissioners provide follow-up questions as well to them. So, that we may begin deliberation. Commissioner, how would you like to proceed?
I would like to motion to offer the opportunity of employment as city manager in the city of Muskegon to Jonathan Seifert.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Gorman, supported by, I'll give that to Commissioner Emery, this is a close one. Proximity, I heard her faster than you. Anyhow, a motion by Commissioner Gorman, supported by Commissioner Emery, to offer, to extend an offer of employment to Jonathan Seifert for city manager of our city. So, that we may begin discussion and deliberation opens up to Commissioner Gorman. Now, we do have a motion on the floor, so we'll be voting on that motion. However, you can discuss, open discussion, you know, with regard to Jonathan, open discussion with regard to LeAnn. But ultimately, there's a motion that will be voted on at some point. But this is open discussion, but I'm going to start with the person who made the motion, followed by the supporter of that motion. So, Commissioner Gorman.
Thank you. Yeah, I will start and say, I think LeAnn did a great job in her process, and we learned more about her. And certainly have had a great opportunity to see her experience in the capacity as interim city manager. I do just feel though, throughout this process, as an applicant before we knew who it was, I think Jonathan stood out from his qualifications, and I was very impressed with him. First round interview, I was very excited that he made it to the second round. And I, I was affirmed in that I felt he was a strong candidate for this position after the first round, and that was further confirmed for me today. So, that's, I don't have any other concerns.
Thanks, Commissioner Gorman. Commissioner Emery, would you like to weigh in at this time?
Pretty much the same thing that Commissioner Gorman said. I really, really, really like his personality and his personability. And his huge willingness to work with our community and our residents.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Emery. I do see the red pen, so Commissioner, why don't I want to call you Commissioner Maholsky? For some reason?
I don't know!
Commissioner Ramsey!
I don't know!
Commissioner Ramsey!
Thank you, Mayor! I just had my red pen ready, so that way I wouldn't be looked over yet again. Always the bridesmaid, never the bride. I want to, I want to just share something that I feel very deeply about. From day one, when we started this search, I talked about city, staff, and management, and leadership being a team. And that it was the team that was going to drive this forward, because no man is an island. And Frank was a powerhouse. But Frank also eventually needed help. And so, we made that team for him. And I think that we have an opportunity here to also have an amazing team. And I think that the reason that I support Jonathan being offered the role as city manager is because LeAnn is amazing at what she does, and we saw her present that today. Her community engagement, and where she wants to take our city, and how she wants to engage our residents and bring them with us. Not pull them along kicking and screaming, but make them a part of the process is something that we need so desperately in every one of our communities. And I think that Jonathan and his experience leading other cities, and townships, and what he's done downtown, and being homegrown, just like LeAnn, is also a huge opportunity and win for us. And where LeAnn doesn't have the experience in the feet on the street, economic development, and bulldogging, that I've literally called it from day one. Frank is an economic bulldog, I love that. Jonathan has that potential, and I think that he and LeAnn together would be an amazing team to help push our city forward and take us to the next level. It's what we need. We need LeAnn and the way that she approaches our community. And we need Jonathan, the way that he engages business. And just from him going out and meeting residents in the last week, like, he's not campaigning for something, every single one of us did that. And I appreciate that. I appreciate that he was able to say, "I didn't know about this wedge, and now I do." Okay. How can he do that with our staff? How does he help to develop our staff so that they're on that same plane? And with the help and the partnership, which is truly how I see it with LeAnn, they'll be unstoppable. And unfortunately, we can't have both of them without it being this dynamic. So, I support that. And I would vote yes.
Well said.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramsey. Any other commissioners wish to weigh in? Commissioner St. Clair?
I will not put a stick in the spokes of this. I will say that I'm a little befuddled on how we ended up in a second round with the two least experienced candidates out of the whole slate that we were given. You know, I know that Jonathan has a couple of years more than LeAnn does in municipal government, but only a couple of years more. In, in very small communities, they're not equivalent to Muskegon in any factor. They are not racially diverse. They are not metropolises. They don't have their own police department. They're not waterfront communities. They don't have downtowns like we do. So while I understand that he does have some experience, he does not have equivalent experience. I appreciate the fact that he has a master's degree. I think that that shows, you know, that, that shows dedication to where he wants to go, and I think that that was a significant barrier for LeAnn. You know, I, I appreciate his diverse background. You know, I know the mayor was very enthusiastic about his communications background. I think that we would benefit from that. And like I said, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna block this, I'm not gonna be a poison pill. I am less enthusiastic than the rest of you, because I continue to have concerns. I don't know how we would rectify any of this, because here we are, you know. But I am, I am hopeful that Jonathan will rise to all of your expectations. I don't know him, I'd never met him before the interviews, and I understand that I am an outlier in this. So I am operating from, you know, two hours basically of contact in my life with him. So that's a tiny little glimpse of who he is and how he is. And I am willing to acknowledge that there's probably a whole lot more to him as an excellent human being than what I am seeing. But I do continue to have some pretty significant concerns about his experience managing a city like Muskegon, because I have not seen anything like that in his, in his resume or in his interview questions. Like, it just isn't there. So, like I said, I will not block this, but I just wanted on record that I have concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner St. Clair. Commissioner Hood?
I'd like to echo some of what Commissioner St. Clair said. I don't think that we got the cream of the crop, the two that we have left to pick from. For as, and I said during the first interview, the experience with Coopersville and Gaines, nothing like Muskegon, nothing like the city of Muskegon, nothing like our diversity, like our diverse city. The idea for it is that I will be the stick in the wheel. Because I, I, I I just don't... Nothing jumped out to me in the, in the interview. You know, a lot was said, but I, I just didn't feel it. And just, like I, just going over, you know, and he was here for downtown, in downtown development. And back then, we didn't have a lot of diversity in the downtown. People felt like they couldn't come downtown, and wouldn't come downtown. So, I mean, when you bring that up, I'm like, okay, so, what tells me it's gonna be different? So, I'm not gonna take any more time, but that's how I feel.
Vice Mayor German? Thank you, Commissioner Hood.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor!
First of all, I'd like to say publicly, the willingness of these individuals to take the time, to have an interest in serving. Our interim deputy, interim manager, LeAnn Miccel, on the job that she's done stepping up and taking on a challenge, because that's basically what it was, to take on a challenge and to get the experience. And I think building relationships and being involved, and as you go on and you learn things, you prepare yourself and position yourself as she's done for the next maybe phase of her career. And that is very commendable and appreciative. With Mr. Jonathan Seifert, committing for his willingness to participate in the interview, but also have an interest in Muskegon. His credentials definitely stands out. Two master's degrees, currently sitting in a position, and serving his community, and a position, in his current position. But Mr. Seifert was definitely not my first choice. There were other candidates that was polished, that holds the experience. Mr. Gabriel Olis was one that really stood out for me, serving in a large city, metropolitan city. Mr. Smith with over 25 years of experience. These are top-tier candidates who's put the work in, who has the experience. And not only that, we had a chance to diversify this administration. And that didn't happen. And I say this again, and some people may take it as so, offensively, but this is factual. We have a mission statement, we have a vision for the city of Muskegon to change the culture and the direction that we want to go in, and represent the city that we serve like we have here on this commission. And we've done that, and the community has spoken. But as for this candidate, with the lack of experience that he has compared to the other two during the comparisons, I don't feel that we've gotten the top-notch candidate. And this is why I stress so hard in the consulting process that the candidate should have a master's degree with experience. That pretty much sets the platform in the direction that we know that this person has put the time in, done, done the work, and gotten the experience, hopefully. And at this time, have done that work. So, I appreciate the, the option to interview Mr. Seifert. And also, I'd like to say what, while I'm thinking about it, just kind of jumping ship here, but it's gonna tie back into where I'm going with this. Commissioner St. Clair's question about the downtown, the farmer's market. I was the only commissioner that voted no of them not moving that. And I heard from the community. And at that time, that was something very sensitive and valuable to that community, in that Angel neighborhood and that Jackson Hill. And being part of that process at that time, that there doesn't sit well with the community still. So I'm, I am not in support of this candidate. I'm not saying that he's not qualified. But I just feel that we have not gotten the top candidate. And I got an email from a citizen that suggested that maybe we should start the process over again and, and reach out. That is another option. I don't know where this commission wants to go with that, but at this point in time, I can't support this candidate on those very reasons.
Thank you, Vice Mayor German. I'm pretty sure I know which person you're speaking of. He had also reached out to me, and I'd spoken to him. He focused his concerns with regard to Ms. Miccel's qualifications and experiences as to why she should not be considered, and within sense as to why she remained in the running, whereas other candidates had been removed. His comments with regard to Mr. Seifert were actually quite positive and flattering, and thought that he would be a very capable and competent city manager for our city. So his concerns are more focused on, on Ms. Miccel. I see, and I understand, you know, questions or concerns with regard to, to experiences or education, but I see both Ms. Miccel and Mr. Seifert as being very good candidates for our city. Both of them know our city very well. They have differing levels of experiences, different levels of education, and I can certainly understand why that would give, you know, people pause with regard to Ms. Miccel, because the extent of her education is a bachelor's in civil engineering, which she does, does not have, you know, a public administration degree. Jonathan, Mr. Seifert does, he has a bachelor's in communications, as well as a master's in public administration and a master's in international administration with a focus on cross-cultural communications. And in that regard, actually, his education exceeds some of the candidates that we already removed from consideration. I would not say that he is subpar or inferior to, to prior candidates, having been removed. I think he's a highly qualified candidate. And in terms of years of experience, I would actually say that his experience with municipal governance, an intimate experience with municipal governance, is twice that of Ms. Miccel. Given his years with Muskegon Area First, as downtown Muskegon now, as Coopersville, and subsequently against township, which I recognize is not nearly as diverse as the city of Muskegon, and I think that is an important consideration, but it is not a homogeneous community at the same time. We, the Gainesville is less than 75% white, city of Muskegon is 60% white. Would not say that's a huge differential, but it is a significant differential. At the same time, our populations are also not huge differentials. They're approaching 30,000, and we're at 38,000. They are a sizable township on the outskirts of Grand Rapids, a major metropolitan area, the second largest metropolitan area in our state. So, and Jonathan knows this community quite well, as does LeAnn. And I think, and I agree with Commissioner Ramsey, I think the two of them would be an incredibly powerful, impactful, beneficial, and positive team. They make a very dynamic duo. I would be happy to see them working together and moving our, our city forward. I am particularly impressed by his communications background, as Commissioner St. Clair mentioned. Not only his educational experience in communications, but his actualized experience of communicating and engagement with the communities that he has served. I think that is one of our weakest points. And it's something that we've talked about as a commission repeatedly, that we need dramatic improvements in how we communicate. How we communicate internally, how we communicate externally, and how we engage our community and help them understand, invite them into the process. And I like what he said, communicate early and often. There was a, a lot, and I, a lot to like. I especially like the progress tracking. And I know Commissioner Ramsey has talked about this in the past, and I think that's important, that we are identifying our objectives, creating metrics to track them, and continuously monitoring them and reviewing them, and seeing where we are on track or off track, and making sure we continue to be on track. I liked his ideas for extending our emphasis on economic development into the commercial nodes in our neighborhoods, and supporting that neighborhood enterprise, with the focus on retaining and growing our existing businesses and community clear. I mean, I can go on and on, but there's also, I could go on and on with Ms. Miccel as well. She had a lot of great things in this presentation. She was at, at an advantage relative to Mr. Seifert in her presentation, because she's worked with us so closely and intimately. And I saw a lot of what we have wanted to do, and a lot of my own individual conversations with her reflected in here as well. Which I, I like to see. So, I think, I think she's phenomenal.
There's one thing in that presentation that we didn't ask for. In that presentation, it's amazing. There's one thing she didn't bring to us that we haven't specifically, since her time with us, asked for.
And if it came down to, to be honest, if it came down to presentation versus presentation, LeAnn would get it. LeAnn would win. If it, if it were just a presentation versus presentation, it's LeAnn. But that's not what we're here to judge, a comparison of presentations. We're here to pick our next city manager, one who's gonna be working closely and intimately with each and one, each one of us, as well as our staff and our community at large, and helping to guide us, partner with us, lead us. And I think LeAnn has done admirably, in spite of some challenging circumstances. I'm excited about the prospect of Jonathan taking the helm, particularly in working alongside LeAnn. And if we move forward with hiring Jonathan, I very much would also like to, and I would welcome commission's support on this, and, and feedback, engage LeAnn in hiring and coming to terms with a contract, so that we retain her as our deputy sitting manager. And if she wants to pursue further education and get her master's in public administration or some other certifications, that we would welcome and support that and potentially fund that to some extent, you know, that's to be determined. But I would welcome the support for that, so that she can continue to improve. That's one thing I did like about Jonathan. Another thing I liked about Jonathan is not only that he got those various different degrees, but also showed his continuous commitment to this field of municipal management, of pursuing numerous certifications. And yes, we need to work with him on getting a DEI certification as well, Vice Mayor German. And same thing with, with Ms. Miccel on that. I do appreciate that both of them are part of the Government Alliance for Racial Equity, and we can support them in getting that DEI certification as well. But I know that he has also, you know, got his infrastructure management champion and certified zoning administrator and citizens master planner from MSU Extension and Economic Development. So I just see a demonstration of continuous education, demonstration of commitment to municipal governance with all of his professional associations. And I really think that they could just be such a powerful dynamic, Mr. Seifert and Ms. Miccel. Those are my thoughts at this time. Commissioner Ramsey?
Yep. I just, I'm, I don't know how this fits, but I need to say it out loud, because if not, my head's going to explode. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take a chance to remind everyone, and our neighbors that are watching at home on this canned presentation, and whoever else can hear me, that diversity, equity, and inclusion is about dealing and addressing the isms. All of the isms, for everyone across the board, so that people have access to what we have to offer. And whether we're healthcare, or whether we're the city government, or whether we're a grocery store. It's the access that we enhance and expand when we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion. And so I want to make sure that as we are having this conversation about these two wonderful candidates, this very educated and qualified Jonathan and LeAnn, who we have personal relationships with, and has done wonderful work in this city and for this city. And like I said, we're like, I'm so sorry for interrupting you earlier, Mayor, but everything that we've ever asked her to do is in that presentation, because she's done it and she wants to continue. So as we continue to look at ways to enhance and expand the way that we address the isms in our community, make sure that we're not belittling or diminishing the people that show up every day to do the work, including every single person on this table, bench, dais, from the people who show up to sweep the floors, to our city clerk, to our mayor, to John, our council. Sorry, John, I didn't want to make you feel like I wasn't, you know, addressing you appropriately. We are a team, and sometimes those teams need to be tweaked. And this is one of those times. And I understand everything that everybody is saying, but we're not gonna get anywhere by making less of someone. So how do we make sure that as we move forward, that everyone's voice is heard and that we understand there's an opportunity in everything that we do every day? And so we just have to continue to strive for that and address the isms across the board.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramsey, and well said. I saw Commissioner St. Clair, Commissioner Hood, you're Googling something. I'm just wondering, where previously, your understanding of Gaines, the Gaines Township in Genesee County versus the Gaines Township in Kent County? Okay. I thought that there's maybe some confusion, because I saw some verification. Commissioner Gorman?
Thank you. I want to say, I'm hearing you, Commissioner St. Clair, and I really respect your thoughts and opinions. And I also really respect that your apparent willingness that if, when we move forward, I know you have been showing up to do the work and meet one-on-one with our interim city manager. And I just really respect that you are looking ahead, and I know that you will do the work with our next city manager, and to Michael's point about being a team. However this vote goes, I really hope that you can hear Jonathan's willingness to work alongside each of us, as we represent different parts of the city, but one city together. And I really hope that everyone takes this as an opportunity to evaluate how you are serving the city right now. Are there opportunities within your own service that could use improvement? Is Jonathan a partner in that? And he should be your partner in that. And I just hope that you are all encouraged that you can lean on him and meet one-on-one with him for those updates. Again, the relationships you have with your residents is different than the relationships that city managers are gonna have, but if we can work alongside each other to improve those, I think there's huge opportunity with Jonathan to do that, and with LeAnn still on staff. Just wanted to mention that.
Well said, thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Gorman. Yes, Vice Mayor German?
Yeah, just kind of echoing back. And to everyone's point, and it's well taken and considered. As I stated before, being a commissioner, 11 years on this commission, and we look for change. And how do you get change? You have to implement it. You can have lip service constantly, but if there's no implementation and actually putting it into process, you're not going to get change. All you're just going to have is just talk and conversation. As I asked city manager, interim city manager about hiring our police chief, dealing with diversity and equity, and she gave her reason why. I respect that because she was in that position to make that decision. I don't know the logistics of it, but that there was a missed opportunity. I think we had another missed opportunity when we had a qualified candidate that was African-American, black, however, he recognizes himself. To come into a city and make change and, and to give a different perspective of reaching out and doing things to make things equitable, because he has the experience, he has the credentials, he has the certification in DEI, which none of these candidates that we're talking about right now, they don't have. So is it the commission here that's have on blinders? We have to look within ourselves and our own biases, and we all have biases. And that's part of the training with DEI, and maybe that's something that this commission should also consider taking as well. I think for the most part of it, whoever's the, if Mr. Cypress becomes the city manager, as I've done before, I'm going to always work to do all I can to support and do what's in the best interest of the city and the neighborhoods. But I strongly feel that we have not, did I do diligence to really make change in this decision process? And again, I'm not in favor, you know, of the candidate. I'm not saying he's not qualified. The man is exceptionally qualified. But there are some things that I look at that I think are shortcomings of moving this city forward when it's, we talk about equity and being inclusive and access to that. And I don't think he can do that at this point in time. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor German. I just wanted to follow up on these points. You know, with change, whatever change you're looking for, for accomplishing, certainly there's more than talk and rhetoric is necessary. I wholeheartedly agree with you. One of the things I find appealing with Mr. Cypress is his emphasis on metrics and progress tracking, on identifying those objectives and creating metrics to measure progress, and then continuously monitoring and adapting to ensure that you're achieving your objectives. Because it's that kind of diligence that's going to realize change. And creating your team and the processes to do so. In terms of the commission also doing work on DEI, Mr. James, Ken James, who we partially fund at the Community College, is pursuing some DI courses that we are invited to participate in. And so I would encourage all of us to register and participate in that. One thing that stands out to me, and someone who we all know very well, I won't share his name, but we all know very well and have worked with him in different capacities, had shared some of his observations with me, and that many of these candidates that we've already removed from consideration, it was essentially their twilight careers. It was them, you know, final career, or moving closer to family, or wanting to live in a resort or vacation or tourism community, or a number of different reasons that weren't really community oriented, Muskegon oriented. But that's what we have with our two finalists, is two candidates that are very Muskegon oriented, who love this community, are passionate about this community, that really, really want to be the manager of this community, to serve our community, not for any other peripheral reasons necessarily.
Can I say something?
Yes, you may, Commissioner Gorman.
I want to respond to the Vice Mayor, particularly about due diligence to this job, because I hear you. And I think it's fair for the public to have my response to the comments you just made. There was plenty of opportunity for all of us to attend our one-on-one meetings with the interim city manager at those meetings or beyond those meetings to talk about the decision of the Public Safety Director. Because, and I can speak for myself, I was also very excited about one of the top candidates that was diverse. However, after having those conversations, like Leanne mentioned during this interview today, there were some concerns about the references that informed her decision to make the best decision, and I think she did. But I do feel like, and I know, many of us on the commission were very excited about one of those candidates, and it just was not the right decision in the interest of the city. When it comes to one of the diverse candidates we had during this process, there was ample preparation to the interview that brought light to some concerns in his professional career that he had the opportunity to address in his interview, and he chose not to. So I feel that we, as the body who was here on time to the meeting to narrow down the candidates to the final two, made the appropriate decision on the best interest of the city based on the preparation we do for this meeting. So that is how I feel about how we got to this process, and I feel very confident in that. And again, I hope moving forward, whoever the city manager is, we all recognize responsibility of this role we have to come to every meeting prepared and ready to vote.
Thank Commissioner Gorman. I'd like to go to Commissioner St. Clair, she hasn't had a, wait in a minute. So, Commissioner St. Clair.
I would like to point out that the only candidate that we did not publicly deliberate on was Candidate Smith. And I do think that that is problematic because of how it's perceived. I think that that was an unfortunate consequence of being rushed because, and I'm the reason why we were rushed. I had one hour and we were about our business, but I do think that that was, that was unfortunate because I think it would have been really valuable for the public to hear why we didn't move him on. I also did not choose to endorse him as a second round candidate because of the reasons Commissioner Gorman referenced. And also, some of his answers during the interview had me concerned that he would not be able to be directive to us in the way that as a volunteer, undereducated body of elected officials need from our professional help. Like, we need a city manager who is going to tell us when we're about to drive the bus off the cliff. And I heard from him explicitly that he would not be that person. And that, that was very concerning to me. But I also think that we did the community a disservice by not taking the time to deliberate him. Because now that was the only one that we didn't deliberate, and it was coincidence and unfortunate timing, but it looks bad and it smells bad.
I completely hear you and understand you in that. I would just get the context that from the public's perception, I don't think many people saw our deliberation on any of those candidates.
I know, but it happened, and there's recording of it, except for him.
There was no recording on, on our deliberation. For when we removed Joe Neb and Mr. Durham, there was no recording of it. It was open to the public, but there was no recording. Same thing when we deliberated on Mr. Gabriel Latos, and then we removed Mr. Smith by virtue of a vote of who's your least preferred candidate, so that we could expedite the process. I do believe, and that's why I emphasized when we had tallied that up and it was five to one, to remove Mr. Smith from consideration. I, I encouraged us to communicate to the public, to our constituents, so that they understood why that was the case, that we didn't have time to communicate that at that time, but for us to do it individually. But I respectfully hear you, particularly because of, and what we, all of us have probably have heard, is some folks in our community not, you know, of differing backgrounds and demographics, who have raised questions, legitimate questions, concerns that we would have removed, because I had no context, that had questions, concerns that we would have removed Mr. Smith from consideration, who was the only African-American candidate of the six, and had more qualifications than Ms. Mike's up, who remained under consideration. And so I understood that, and had addressed it individually as, as they have come up. There were some concerns that came up in his background, as well as in terms of jumping around, especially in most recent years. And my concern with there was not going to be longevity with Mr. Smith in our community. And I'm looking for some level of longevity. Doesn't, doesn't mean Mr. Mize was with us for, you know, two decades. We don't necessarily need a, a city manager that's going to be here for another two decades.
Absolutely not.
But more than, more than two years, because I don't want to do this process over every two years. And, and that's why I'm not interested on starting the process over either. We would have to pay for that again, because Michigan Public Safety is not going to do it freely, because we have qualified candidates. There's no reason not to pick from our qualified candidates. We would have to pay for a new process and start all over, and it'd be months out. And I think we need clarity in leadership and start moving our, our city forward in this regard, particularly when we do have an exceptionally qualified candidate, as Vice Mayor German has indicated himself. Mr. Cypress is an exceptionally qualified candidate. But Mr. Hood, Commissioner Hood?
When you say stability and Mr. Smith had jumped around, well, the same with John. He's jumped around. You know, so what, three years and, was it two, three years in Cooper'sville? Then in Gaines, it's what, three years there, and I moved to Muskegon? I mean, I don't have a problem with you looking for better employment, but I'm just saying, that compare, that's, that's a comparison. Same thing. So, I was the one that voted for Smith because there's always that last minute information that come in when it come to us, when it come to blacks, African-Americans. When it comes to that top position. Even with Leanne as the first female city manager, if she was to get that job. She can get the top job, but she can be up under the top person. That's how it always is. So when we make these comparisons, and it's obvious that some people knew who some of these candidates was before everyone else did. I just, I agree with Vice Mayor German. I agree with Commissioner St. Clair on some of what she said, and a lot of what she said. And I'm staying firm that, that I'm not.
Thank you, Commissioner Hood. Just want to clarify that no one received information on who the candidates were before the rest of us did. That remained anonymous throughout.
Well, when we were in back here, and I know we can't talk about closed session.
Oh, no, there was presumption. Nobody knew definitively.
I mean, they knew, you knew. I mean, let's, let's be real.
Well, particularly when you, when you
So, that's all I'm going to say.
Names and demographics.
Because I asked the question, and it was like, should we tell them? Should we tell them? So come on now. Let's be real. I try to be real.
There were presumptions.
So
No names and demographics or identifying cities were revealed by MML to us as we had our deliberations. And Mr. Smith was not among the recommended candidates to this body for us to interview. We chose to add Mr. Smith. Without knowing his demographics or his name, we chose to add Mr. Smith to our interviewing rounds. And I welcomed him, and I, and I found him to be personable. There's many things to like about him. But ultimately, I didn't think he was the, the best fit for our community. Commissioner, or Vice Mayor German?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Couple of points there. And starting off with Commissioner Gorman's point. As to one-on-ones with interim manager Mike's, I think it's very important. I attended those sessions, and to be informed. And you know, we laying that information to the commission, building that relationship, so on. So you can have an insight of what's going on with department heads. Her direction was very helpful. As to your point with the selection of the Public Safety Director, as I stated, she answered that question. Again, the biggest disappointment was that the public knew before we knew. Okay, the commission didn't even know. So I found that to be somewhat, I'm professional. And not direct or transparent. These are my thoughts as an elected official. Because I felt we should be privy to that information first. And as time for the continuing interview process with the last session before we carried on here, reconvened. I showed up late because I was leaving work. And this is not my only job. I do have a, a job in education. So therefore, I did miss some of that conversation and the interviewing process with those individuals. As to Commissioner Hood's point, when you compare apples to apples, you, you could see that there's some similarities, because as he stated, the movement and switching jobs with Mr. Smith and then Mr. Cypress, those you can compare those. I, I think, again, when we talk about change, we talk about that lens, we talk about those biases. And sometimes they can be unconscious, and you don't know it. And this is what I'm seeing here when it comes to trying to justify one candidate actions or decisions that they pursue in their career opposed to another. And which this individual just happens to be a, a black man that's, again, educated, and both of these guys, Mr. Cypress, educated, Caucasian man. But Mr. Smith carries the most experience. Mr. Smith, not only during his interviewing process that I was disappointed with, that there were some interruptions that kind of distracted him maybe from some of his answers, being focused. The officers did come in and remove the individual. And what it looks like to the comment, what Mrs., I mean, Commissioner St. Clair stated, it just doesn't look right, you know? That's why I suggest this process be done over. Yes, it's going to cost money, but we want to be fair about the process. When we talk about equity, that's the opportunity and fairness of opportunity to have those opportunities and access to opportunity. Not just to settle, and I'm not saying, hey, these Not just to settle, and I'm not saying, hey, these candidates wasn't good candidates, okay? But there is some flaws within this process and, and it's pretty evident and I'm quite sure um, this commissioners that's, uh said that, I see the same thing that I see and probably the community will see it as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor German.
You're welcome.
Um, Commissioner Ramsey.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a second to thank um Commissioner Gorman and Vice Mayor Commissioner Hood and Commissioner St. Clair for sharing the things that they just shared, because these are not easy things to bring up. Um, because they're personal for each and every one of us. And so thank you for that. I also want to co-sign a bunch of things that people said, but the one that I really want to draw a light on is what Commissioner St. Clair said about us not discussing the um dissolution of the relationship with the only African American candidate we had. Because I, me, Michael Ramsey, did not know how to say in front of people that, oh, his references came back not so great and I'm not comfortable. Um, so that's my fault, right? Like I can take ownership for that and accountability. Uh, but that is what happened and you know, we, we received detailed emails for all of those candidates and that's how we as a bench were able to make that decision and I want to be super clear about that. Um, that every question we asked was answered and that is not information that is shared with the public and it shouldn't be because people's lives. Um, but we could have done a better job of saying, this is why, we could have said anything, not even a better job Rebecca, I mean Commissioner St. Clair, we could have said any damn thing, right? We could have said one thing about it and it would have been better than what we did. So support that. Um, and after saying that, I also want to remind us that we are um sharing a lot of personal things and maybe this might be getting a little bit personal and we should kind of circle back to the question at hand, uh without making anyone feel like they're being dismissed, that is not what I'm trying to do. I just know that we could do this all day, guys, because we're passionate people who care about this community and the people that live in it. Yeah, and that's what I don't want to do because that's gonna make me look like a major jerk. So I'm just gonna say, uh, you know, we, we could call the question or we could just, I agree to vote on what's happening.
Indeed, so. Obviously, the, the best welcoming of a new city manager is one in which is unanimously supported by the commission. It does not, um, I get the distinct impression that that is not happening with this candidate. Do not think, nor have I heard anything that convinces me anything com- so compelling that convinces me that we need to start this process over, that we need to disregard uh Ms. Mike's out and Mr. Cypress as potential candidates for our city manager. We have a motion to appoint or to not appoint, cause we haven't gotten there yet. We have a motion to extend an offer of employment to Mr. Cypress. That is what we're here to vote on. We've deliberated on it. I don't know what more could come of discussion or if we could be further productive. Um, I will say, I will add something else because it was stated that some of us have had an opportunity to know Mr. Cypress in the past. And I will say that three of us on this commission have worked with him in a professional capacity. He was our downtown Muskegon now director that we worked closely with on launching our downtown business improvement district. It was not an easy process. In fact, his predecessor did not prevail, did not succeed in bringing that about. Mr. Cypress brought that over the finish line and working with our downtown business owners and property owners on making it happen. And he did so with clarity and calmness and purpose. Um, and I remember being impressed during that process. We had a little bit of overlap. I, I came on the commission at the beginning of twenty fourteen. Um, and he was left as a, the downtown Muskegon now director in twenty fifteen, I believe. And um, I remember being impressed by his work in that role. He then went on to Cooper'sville and worked there for six years. And then went on to charter township of Gaines and he's been there since May of last year, so going on a year and a half. He was not presently looking for another position, but this opportunity presented itself. And he saw it as being his dream job to be able to return to Muskegon and serve as our city manager. I think he is exceptionally qualified and I will be supporting this motion. And I hope that we all, well, you might have, and I understand, it is important that we communicate our feelings. It's important that we communicate our thought processes. It's important that we communicate our positions. Um, as our interim manager likes to say, which I, which I love.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, clear as kind. So, did you have something to, to interject?
Yeah, I was looking, it says city manager for Cooper'sville, May two thousand eighteen to May twenty twenty one.
Served as assistant city manager and then he said.
Right, but I thought you said as city manager.
No, no, I said he went to Cooper'sville and he was there for six years.
Okay.
Yes. Um, I lost my train of thought. I was about wrapping this up.
Clear as kind.
Clear as kind.
I think it was good.
Clear as kind, and so I think it is important that we each communicate um our thoughts, feelings and positions on, on this matter. And I respect each and every one of you and I, and I am so grateful to serve alongside each one of you on this commission for the benefit of our community and its citizens. We come at it from different perspectives, different experiences, different wishes, different wants, different views. And whomever we hire, I hope that each of us welcomes them and engages them, communicates how you want them to serve our city going forward, both individually and collectively. Give them an opportunity. Beyond this vote, I do also want to hear from you all about retaining, assuming it sounds like, I don't wanna, I don't like presuming votes, but it sounds like we will be voting in the affirmative and in the, if we do that for Jonathan, I would welcome hearing support for the intentional retainment of Leanne Mikezal as our deputy city manager and unwillingness to negotiate a contract with her to do so inclusive of supporting her for additional educational attainment. So that she could be better qualified for this position or other positions in this field if she so chooses, but. Unless there's, I'm gonna go to roll call unless there's some, Commissioner Emery, we haven't heard a lot from you, so I'll give you final thoughts.
Okay, I was gonna, I was going to ask, um, yeah, Commissioner Ramsey to define ism. Cause we've heard a lot about isms here. Well, I want to remind everybody that isms come in different genders, different, different faces, different skin colors, different heights, different weights, you know, different hair. Um, and so we, it's, it isn't just about the color of their skin, you know? Whoops. One of our candidates said today that he is gay. Um, and so that's an ism that we are also learning to embrace in our community with open arms and unconditional love. So I just wanted to get that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner Emery.
Yes, sir.
All right, roll call please.
Vice Mayor German?
No.
Commissioner Gorman?
Yes.
Commissioner Emery?
Yes.
Commissioner St. Clair?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
No.
Commissioner Ramsey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.